Please stand for prayer question. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us to your safety tonight. I ask that your blessing be upon us all. Thank you for each member of the J.I.P.S.D. Thank them all of us that we may manage our things with love through our eyes and return on you as we work in the best interest of the people who are called to serve. Our Father, who is in life, who art in heaven, hallowed at the highest spot of heaven, and who is with us in the highest standing, our nation under God, indivisible, with the glory of his name, amen.
Yes, hello. My name is Cynthia Mignano. I'm a sheriff of the town of James Island, a member of the James Island Council, also a landowner, sheriff of the town of James Island. I would like to do a timeline of events that drew in these parts. I carefree of the time being claimed and have the government to give due information. January 17, 2023, the town of James Island's BCA met and members of all its citizens. Town of James Island's BCA approved the variance to their municipal two grand trees to the intersection between the right of the adjacent street 11, 82th and 400th. There were four conditions, number four, if you want verdict to a client. The trees shall not be removed until all permits of the project is completed and all new values are signed up on the project. Sunday, February 12, December 23, 4:31 PM, that was intended to be moved, but all the classes, the government has been assigned by the name of SCBAE. Such is the range of trees. Here, by the nature of the move of the trees, they can turn dangerous, they cannot change the physicality, he needed much more. This is no consent, it is a clearance of James Island's BCAE. February 16, on the ranch being cut down by contract and working with SCBAE. So quickly, I take this to be the part of the self-see. February 17, 2023, 20 years of the time, that he will be tied up for other crimes and say that she is known, contract with SCBAE that has a duty to move, so we quote, the issue is concerning our vehicles. This timeline of events, which caused great discord at the time of the law. The BCAE owners, the norm, are to clear enough that everything is held. Recognition of the entire board of commissioners, and its consideration was stated by the town of James Island, town health committee, during public comments by Brooklyn Sheriff and the district. These actions taken by that people on public records and by his own statements are a blatant charge and a major. A formal violation of order. This type of blatant charge protocol, who damn you, the people who are shooting, you must be drawn to the jury. Hey, can I have a piece of order? Can I have an order?
Under the South Carolina Freedom Declaration, the current town of James Island, we request the opportunity to express our claim, copies of public records from the James Island Public Administration, that we know the use of current being brought based speed on the James Island Public Service System for more needed and not physically present on the property. We believe that our legal interests are changing every day today. That we are being charged, it's not in fact that we are charged. We have only one two inch meter on our property, and yet we are being charged with base rate of two inch meters. We think that we may not believe in one of the person who has been done in those sciences for being charged, but we're listening to that, and I feel I will reject this information. And I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Cephus, then I just ask, we need to see our engineer or engineer something to be mentioned at meeting, maybe at the beginning of our regular meeting, and the bottom ten minutes or something, so we can, we all receive this information that to understand it better, and to understand your responsibility better.
I can, I can open the, the, the.
That was great. And if we could hear from your engineer, I appreciate the information you all sent, it was a sense of privilege to all of us, that it's just hard for me to understand the whole and how long.
Um, I'm, I'm.
I, I think I can't have a bathroom floor. I'm just saying you can't have a bathroom floor.
I'm, I'm perfectly agree on that, but I would like, please to tell it, since I'm in a territory that is a relationship.
I make those really, really trouble. Yeah.
I'm going to kind of, yeah.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Martin? Thank you, my name is Sarah Volkan, I'm a councilman with the town of James Island. Uh, tonight I'm not speaking in my role as a councilman, I'm speaking here as a private citizen, um, because, uh, that would be most appropriate. I'm not representing any of the, uh, numbers with P.S.B. commissioners, staff members, employees and citizens. I appear tonight to address my concerns with unilateral decision forty by the Sheriff of this body. I would direct your district legal counsel to investigate the bylaws and charter of this organization, to determine the extent to which individual members have the authority to represent all commissioners within a unilateral and mandatory action with other government entities. In particular, when that unilateral action is counter to ongoing actions by a previous and friendly and cooperating government entity, the town of James Island. The action taken by the P.S.B. sheriff to request SCBAE for removal of two grand trees without consensus of the rest of the commission was made in direct violation of the ruling by the town of James Island for the seven of the year. The DCA is a widely legal authority to move the removal of the trees only after an associated road project was finalized and signed off on by the town of James Island and city of Charleston. This is not happening. The P.S.B. sheriff ignored this ruling and instead issued an authority to help these trees. James Island will not look like James Island with all of our right away trees on the earth, because we are concerned with tree quality, fire cuts, fire maintenance, and the issues of. I hope about no confidence in P.S.B. who definitely deserves this decision, as this poor decision will impact the future relationship with the town of James Island. Thank you. I'm willing to share an electronic version of statement with all members of the commission. Uh, meanwhile, I have to review this one.
Where is this here? Is this a knowledge?
We might definitely go over there, but. Well, I don't think they're not all there, but. Um, my name is Cynthia Volkan, I'm a commissioner of the Detcom P.S.B., and I am actually going to speak a few things about P.S.B. business. Um, I've now been on the commission three years, and since my election, and I swear in ass, I have had great difficulty getting any issue on the agenda, just due to our bylaws. I don't care if I'm lying, and it's, it's like I'm ignored on the third or fourth day, I'll then get back, we say. But, um, we are all elected people, and we all have things that are really important to us, that we'd like to bring before the commission, um, because we're paying on the people, if we sit in, or our salary setting, because we're, you know, bringing to us raising taxes this year. So I think it's really important that the commission, hiring at the P.T. or salary setting sometimes, not for cash or compensation, but the commission. Um, everything someone is sitting is to give the report to the commission, but it's really difficult when we aren't touched by our bylaws. So I know they must, the root for root and re-rising, and change a lot, I don't believe that it was back up and dealt back into them, but maybe we need a special executive session with our attorneys, that, um, I'm also concerned about officer responsibility and duties, and I certainly would like to think anything about a B.C.A. ruling that anyone felt might definitely affect the district, put on the agenda and come forward to the commission. Because in the two years I've been here, I haven't heard anything about trees. But that, my personal worry about the tree in the back yard, and I broke the last weekend with state horse, it's still there, which, you know, I think, y'all know how strong I thought that, are one thing, trees that we have in the back yard. So if anybody could, you know, covertly call me, if they come out there, I'd ask specifically if that's who you say, uh, that's the only you on our whole side, but that's important. Um, I'm excited, who else? There were different reports on the trees, and also, I asked for an executive session to pick up, which here is due to the authority and for us to get legal advice on that, yet it's not on the agenda. So when we go to consider agenda, I would like to make a motion to admit an executive session, or, which I believe lawyers, I can use, if it's an emergency. And this is an emergency here, a hundred and fifty grand tree to be cut down, that's an emergency. So I'd like for Michael Herschel to consider an indication there to take this up, you know, thank you. Speaking, I have a motion, I've got a motion to admit our executive session to add in legal advice on officer duties and responsibilities. Does that work, Jeff? The way I said that?
I mean, that's a notion.
Okay, my motion is that this is an emergency here, because officer of this commission acted outside commission approval to take an action in violation of a legal body holding, ruling, and the appropriate action would be to appeal it. We've got thirty days to appeal it, anybody can appeal, hire a lawyer, send a civil court and appeal it. I put an email, I asked that this can be put on the executive session, I want it to be added, and it's an emergency.
Ask for a time, we want to.
No, I didn't. What is my, I have, I didn't mean to go back to work. I'm asking for now and since discussions are turning, as agreed with me, that it can be first executive session, this is an emergency, and now we can find a court second. This is a motion on, I'll send it. Thank you. Now, I see the best, I'm moving it.
Well, um, as I've said many, many times, you know, the tree thing, it has less on time than it does. Let me finish what I'm saying. Um, I don't want to hear, I don't want to know, no, my, I think, no.
Oh, is that a better?
No, because you can't say something that's not directly related to what was alluded to by several states and another state that don't have enough people to listen to.
You did, and we got one issue proposed right now, and that is adding to the executive session, and that is legal counsel, officer duty and responsibility. That would be the issue proposed right now, lots of lawyers fighting about all that speak about it, with the chair on that, and of course, the chair has warned all those, agenda because for means of firmness.
We are, we are, we can't tell our vote.
See, and we're not following our bylaws, no, attorneys in our bylaws, we can't tell our vote before we make them.
I'm asking you to do what, make an opinion about it.
Well, I would love to have one, this area is public, not the case.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to be a gentleman, got it?
But I know, we do, we do, we do.
You're welcome to your place. It is an emergency, where a healthy growing a tree.
It's already down, it's already gone. You can't bring that back.
Okay, that's not an issue.
Okay, I want to do it again. Not that long, minutes, okay.
Next round, we should, we should, wait, you know, this is out of order.
Okay, no problem, so we said we're going to roll call to voters, that we talk to this, and we're going to roll call to add it to the agenda.
Yeah, we're going to.
No, the motion is on the floor to add to executive session, legal advice, as the authority of the commission.
Exactly, add it, to the executive session, which I asked for more than twenty-four hours before, once I've made the actual email from the D.O.B.
I don't want to compare it to something I can just be most surprised to deal with.
So, I assume, I assume we got, we have to, we.
It was Thursday, or before the agenda came out, and again, I, I stated that this is an emergency, because the island is a threat, this will be managed, that SCBAE is cutting off two grand trees, too. Those are these trees for addition, there's three different arms which have been brought on them, he's asking, in my opinion, not by per authority, and that's the goal, because there's more work on it.
This was raised on Thursday, last year, it was Thursday, I was going to.
Okay, well, well. Mr. Rata?
No.
Mr. Rata? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Sometimes someone has a definite target.
It's not my own doing.
I don't consider it an emergency, like, you know, like, it would be a for you.
You're out of order, and you're waiting for your customers, oh, yeah. This is going to be an executive session.
You're so, no, no, you're out of order.
The motion is to carry it, to the, to the, to the community board.
Very quick to you.
I make a motion to approve this executive generalist, number four, waiting committee meeting during the week 23, and regular permission during the week 23. Question?
Question, from Stephanie?
Are you members of the council?
Okay, is any discussion on that? All right, and, uh, well, well. What do you vote for?
Just, and send it there, Mike.
Yes.
Mr. Trump?
Yes.
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 Okay, we're going to, uh, going on about the case of justice commissions recognizing of past fifty, one situation that has been extended, so more.
So right now, we have, uh, Senator Blackmore, Rupert Manow, and J.I.P.S.D. containing a one million dollar earmark, and the state's annual budget signed into law June 2022, this million dollars is going for the effort of improving water quality and reporting the game type of state water check. We should receive the check for a million dollars in December 2022, and we want to take a photo opportunity with them in the commission, and Representative Westmore, who can post on social media, our efforts to be able to, so, use the, uh, uh, waste water, water map, and you can get, publish your clarity house, type, uh, one million dollar check, so, we're hoping to get some of the permissions up here to stand behind the check with, uh, Representative Westmore.
Oh, wow.
Right?
We all, we all.
We also. You got a why? Got a why?
Got three forty nine, stay. Put it down a little bit, there you go. Mary and Buck.
I appreciate the recognition, but really, the thanks goes to the town and the mission for their leadership on this project. Uh, this is a drop in the bucket for all the work we have to do, but thank you for the recognition, and but mostly thank you for the work that y'all are all doing on this incredibly important project, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Action, I, this is what I want to, hold on. The first one, number six, staff regulations, is a, um, our department, 2023, BHA, A.F. B grant, and we have, uh, specifically, uh, Sean E. Teller, we got that right.
So members of the commission, remember, uh, discussion of last waiting meeting, committee meeting, that was, uh, the thirteenth of February concerning the A.F. B grant for the fire department, the air tent, and we last submitted in December of 2021, and so this is the district's application for the next round of funding. It doesn't follow an annual schedule, it's as they disperse the funds, and as they get more to disperse, uh, they ask for applications again. So, the hope is to leverage twenty-nine thousand dollars for approximately five-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars of FEMA to purchase six-hundred-and-nine thousand, five-hundred dollars worth of forty-five SCBA, so that it helps contain three of the end. So, someone put the application together, and last week, uh, um, the commission approved.
So, it's probably four-year-old, we don't have that. Our air pets are coming, we're, 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 we're. So, the D.A.S. is going to, the orders to develop the most of the priorities, and kind of, flow it down to the.
I make a motion that we approve the, um, fire department's point of view, same as the A.F. department. Do we have full comment on?
It's, it's heated positions on the other side. But once we add all the different positions that got left, like, ladder with that six, the rest of the that six, we want to go to the beach, we're that right, so we plus, plus a few pairs in the other of the four.
How many actors, or, how many fires, those do you have?
We have forty-eight divisions, three of them are not, we have forty-five.
You have forty-five, but, it wasn't, okay. We're going to talk then?
Forty-four, it's not a quick process. Um, so again, we're still hearing back, we're still distributing money that we're applying for in December of 2021. So, they're not quick on the distribution. So, we need to call by, by, by.
All right, it's, it's, we have the, maybe in nine days.
The, what? You know, really important, firemen, through the law, you know, the work we're facing, chemicals and people, so, I don't think, um, I don't think that, before that, we got a lot of hand, we just kind of, monitor these things, and keep on, but we, we, we have, like, a better, and better, and what we're, um, help. We have, like, years of burn, not a lot of things, second?
It was a crap, we're out of the whole thing. That was a late, hot, late, hot, it's actually, you know, a lot older than last, we've come up with standards by paying fifty thousand dollars to upgrade, no retirement, and how we got to the point where they're not even serviceable, we're willing to come out and test them, they get an exit, annually, by a third party company, we told us last year that if we're done, we're, we're not touching this, so, no, it was a pair of, that, we either get a break, or we have.
Did we get our bullets, yes, that I may go on it a couple years ago, did we have enough of them? Okay, this chapter.
So they're done for, for the all, for all.
No, it's coming through. Okay, well, well. Mr. Rata?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would like to remember, Kevin, um, when we moved before, back in the, for the whole ordinance, we feel, the agreement, ordinance, we, we, we all have a topic here?
I make a motion to a great, for discussion for this.
So, we have a, a, a session on that.
Well, I think that it was not for the.
Right, so members of the commission, remember, discussion for the waiting meeting, um, the. Um, proceed to the first reading of the ordinance to repeal the procurement ordinance. So if the first reading is approved, the ordinance would be publicly advertised. A public hearing is scheduled for six thirty, but next regular permission meeting Monday, the twenty seventh of March. So when we start a half an hour early to be able to have a public hearing, so to, um, prior to the second.
If I have to please approve the ordinance, the old one, don't we have to pass the minimum? I mean, a public hearing should be on the new ordinance and the repeal, not just the repeal.
Right, so that's, that's number eight informational item. You saw, um, the thing in the packet, that the red line version, um, of sort of the procurement resolution.
So why isn't that here for the review?
We, we don't have, um, we have to repeal the procurement, procurement ordinance. And then the next thing on the agenda for the twenty seventh of March, after the repeal of the procurement ordinance, would be the, um, the next thing on the agenda would be the procurement resolution. And we scheduled a public hearing at six thirty for both the ordinance repealing the procurement ordinance, followed by the same procedure. We publicly advertise and have, um, first reading of the procurement resolution.
It's a correct, that you're leaving draft, the development question, gives the good grid, more power to spend with a lesser bid lock focus.
No. The fifty thousand dollar threshold is the, the existing draft. So the fifty thousand dollars from the twenty fourteen, fifty thousand dollars is still first, same with the emergency first, for sixty thousand dollars.
But the last time you left on the model. Remember that?
So the fifty thousand dollars remains as a threshold.
Well, is coming back, anything?
No.
Remember we called the fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand.
Well, that's what you move is, if you have to make an emergency permit, it costs, it costs greater than two thousand five thousand, but less than fifty thousand, we need to be informed with the next mission of what you put out.
And it was, it would go, it would go to the commission. So, so basically, what you have there, um, is the process to enforce the commission. I mean, you, um, you might remember the Tahoe that came up for the fire department. And he'd been trying to buy a Tahoe for a while to put the other people, like that's who said he's using, uh, self truck. When that Tahoe, when that opportunity came available, we notified the commission and said, look, this wasn't a plan, you got a Tahoe, this is what we're trying to do. Um.
Was it ever fifty thousand?
He wasn't. And I, I, I notified the commission, hey, this is what's going on, and you'll have more about it. If we require a budget adjustment, everything within there is already planned for within the appropriation. If we have to come back to the mission and ask for appropriations adjustment, again, that would be a, uh, a resolution to modify this from your budget resolution.
Well, I don't know if it's a reasonable contradiction, difficulty on my part, but I can't support the new permit resolution because the lines came out that if an emergency permit, why is that should be thought about, plus greater than two thousand five thousand, but less than fifty thousand, we shall be informed at the next meeting, that is what you knew. And I would like us to be informed with the next meeting.
And you see, um, in there, within the graph, the article nine, section nine, nine oh one, A, two, on the second to last page, twenty two to twenty three, based on the feedback of a ways and means committee meeting. That last sentence now reads, the sale of property requires two readings for the regular reading.
I greatly appreciate that because I had suggested that, and then I had to even use the register. That happened when I was gone, but I appreciate that second reading was without him. And now it applies to the myself, we're taking it not. That is kind of. Thank you.
But what, what part, which section?
Emergency. I'm on page ten of twenty three at the top.
Who's that?
Well, the very first paragraph at the top of page ten, in the red line version, in the red line version? I would like us to be let know because an emergency permit is not necessarily going to be written in the budget. And all, I mean, it's simple. All the state does is let us know with the next mission, we need to get as far as as before.
Which is three, three zero.
Yeah.
One, three, five, but less than fifty, and now it's saying fifty.
It was more.
More, correct.
So you're saying, oh, that's mine?
If it's fifty thousand or greater, it must be included by the commission, that is totally different because it's combined. If it's a dump first, it costs a hundred and twelve thousand, and it's an emergency and we've got a hurricane, we've got to have a special medium, and we've got to bring that down, so we can do it by Zoom for a little while, a little bit of virtual media. But if it's a hurricane situation and they've got by something that is over twenty five thousand, we can do that. At fifty thousand, he just needs to let us know in Kansas, he's going to have meaning that did. And an emergency permit would be something outside of that. And I'm saying, let's put that in. I mean, if, if people want a new fire station build, and if it's an emergency, the US Fire Department is in direction, so why?
All right. We'll, we'll freshen up, with the, uh, twenty twenty five, and that's the quote. Maybe it's changed to, this is where it's at, fifty. Like, we have to prove by the connection, that it's between twenty five thousand and fifty, to let us know what the last is. That is the rule. Because this is the next one, you got a four hundred.
It works.
Spuck out of the way. Yeah, but it's different twice, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's what.
So this, so this is not, this is not for, uh, vote, basically, right now, I mean, we can discuss it at the, at the next action item for the next informational item. Or we can.
But, but we don't, we don't want to get, the reason why we're taking that is because we don't want to use rules or extreme, permit ordinance, even with first reading. If the next one is a way, because it's a doctrine, attorney's police, there's a doctrine of, of what? Yeah. What's the doctrine of first impression, your midwife's brief, award, and it's possible.
But this is a, I think what you're commenting on is, in, I don't think, right?
Right.
So. Right, so it's not, it wasn't, we have to feel the resolution, which is just a national question, you know, I replay the comment. There's no action for free, there's any made, eight, ten, comments, we're taking this, and so there's a, a body of orders.
Commissioner Milken, I think we talked about the tenant's doctrine, but that's, this, we're not, we're not adopting one of those. So if you hold on.
We just want three and, to, 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 to warrant us, there's a draft of the new one, it's one of the, what, bunch of.
You got, you got, you haven't adopted it, so that would be the next.
And it's not a order.
Yeah, three days and it had a date, it's March twenty fourth.
You could revise that before.
Yeah, it's a month, that is.
By some of the chain, what we do, we say the process of, of, definitely as expensive, uh, uh, something that's important as the first thing, warrant us, when we draft, they didn't finish it.
That's all. Well, we got, um, you know, probably the latest, what, and next thing, what we discussion, or we think?
You want to watch the resolution today, you believe it, or feel it, or feel it, or play it, that there's a multiple steps, and it's important to, plus all the hearing, that by it's on there, so it's not, but it's not the last.
Sorry. Can we talk about that? I think that, that, what, what, we, we like to say.
No, I mean, maybe this is where it's made, you do have, you could, the only action. But I'm just, but I'm just saying, there's a great first proposal change, that we serve the, bring the bottom case, we implemented in the March.
Thank you. Uh, I was going on far, and it's, it was, we have like a, 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 before you, you get far along, the draft, that's all.
Okay. Marshall, or anybody else, can we flash anything, or ask for that? Okay, let's go home.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Yes. Now, the, um, next Q I, I need, uh, for informational, and we are, so to go, and it's a change there. So, and raise, we need, uh, last day of draft, if you have ready, based upon ways and means committee discussion. So we always want to do this one, and, um, if you like to just, I don't think we could go on it, but we all can go on it, because it's first information and other, that was my concern, I'd be more comfortable if we were doing the third reading.
But we're not. Um, unhappy, that was second reading on the, uh, unhappy that it says, we, on a, we, we. We have a public hearing, we have a reading.
I, I don't think we should just read this sentence that bothers me, but never, and I would, would like to, because that's the only one that, you think that's, you know, they're still, uh, that's fine with them, or if you go, you, you play one of those. It's not, yeah, I'm sure we can. Do you have anything on that? Now, she made me know, we just, I want to ask, yeah?
No, that was my, I was gonna, I was gonna.
These are working documents, it's down the road, there's a issue, you can go back and tell them, how people, really, take now, really, there's something that's taken us two thousand and fourteen.
Just like you don't want to take back the bottle, you don't have to, we take back the employee, and we can go back to the back, but let's get it right now. And I, the last time we did it today, I was feeling, I was like that, and I was very grateful, because it's like, we need to go on the contract. Most of the people that.
So, um, I have these staff, you need to go on, you need to be, I want to.
It's the top of page ten, that first sentence was not to start out.
We don't see anything else, I don't really do.
I mean, just for y'all, if you don't know, we give S, or R, a lot more authority, and we're going to be all the business with the permit. And we give, and we see with all that, which is a lot of our tag, which is a good job, but, you know, I hope we have the staff to help people like me, because it was quite dangerous, we passed a lot of this on the rule. You don't worry, yeah?
No, we won't, we're doing so well.
Okay. All right. There's none more, um, concern about the late, let's go on to the turnout. Update on the potential, potential, known, paid project, Plymouth Avenue, this is kind of something that's come out of the blue, that we have no idea, we want to, we can hope.
So this goes back to, uh, donated land for fire station number three, if everybody's familiar with the boat landing in Plymouth Avenue, in the northern terrace. And I'm in the county, Purvis, the county of Purvis, um, that we own half a lane for a couple hundred feet in front of fire station number three. And that was donated when we accepted the land to build fire station number three. And so the other half of that lane is owned by the city. The county, we mobilized a paving crew to pave Plymouth Avenue down to the boat launch. And then if you're heading to the boat launch, okay, um, we own, go like, came from a fire station number three. This paving project was paved all the way to the apron, the concrete slab in front of fire station number three. Um, it continues, um, towards the boat launch, and the, the road line is a little bit due to the boat launch and the activity there, okay? The city owns the boat launch, and the county owns parking lot, uh, for the boat launch. So we have the county, city, D S C, uh, B O C, and Sanders paving out there, to try to turn and wheel it off, what for what. So it comes out to twenty one five right now. Now I've been testing the loss of health all day, to try to say, can I go to the commission and say, you guys are doing it? Their, their fortune is more, they earn more, their fortune is thirty one five, all right? But this is the cheapest, we're going to get a paving project done, because we don't have to mobilize a crew to get out there. And so, um, this benefits multiple constituents out there. Um, and so I, I don't have the determination from the city, the yes, mission, this is going to be approved by the city, but I would like to be able to continue the work of the city, and county, and all the partners, sort of, when we come back in March, um, for approving this. Because we don't understand what's going on, because it involves multiple entities, and multiple constituents, everything. To the current household. So if you look at that, there's a little gravel strip over there, that is in front of, uh, the fire station apron, that's going to remain gravel. What we're taking is up to that cement slab in front of fire station number three. And if you go over there and look, um, you got some pile of, if you get in pretty lucky.
Um, I've heard of this, yeah, and, and, um, in front of the block, the road, what you want, it's in terrible shape. Um, you know, my hear is that, are they going to do the gravel, because people move really fast, it's going to block out the.
People run far, not, uh, parking.
They're not going into the, tell the parking area. It's just a paved portion of Plymouth Avenue. So when you start right in there, it's all gravel, that's not even considered. Where our lot is gravel, that's not considered, wherever paved it in the right time is what we're talking about.
There's that much, without them?
Oh, we tried, yeah, and we tried to beat them up, uh, control them, and Sanders told them to do it, um, so that's, that's what it is.
And we're not going to pay more than that, so we won't market?
No, and that's what we're trying to work with the county, like, we were here in governmental agreement, I offered to donate that to them, the county said they couldn't. Um, we want to be able to offer and donate that to the city, because, because it makes any sense, the D S C, we're making, uh. Um, we want to be able to offer and donate that to the city, because it doesn't make any sense, the DSC, we're making a.
Listen, they go there.
Well, I don't really, when, when you say bar.
Is, is it? Is it a county road or?
So, the county owns Plymouth Avenue, all the way up to right in front of the fire station. And then, there's this little section, this dividing between the PSC and the city by half a lane. And then, the city owns the rest of the boat launch, and the county owns the parking lot over to the right, if you go in towards the boat launch. So, we're making them together.
We don't want that.
And that's, we don't want it?
Right.
Yeah.
When we got the one.
Weird question.
County won't take it. I try to, county, the city, the city does not, says they won't, but they haven't said they won't. If, if one's trying to sell it. I am all ears, try to get through the computer, because.
No, it's in the running, they.
Right. But by Thursday afternoon, when this was coming out, I could not put it up for action, because I don't have, um, I don't have determination from the city. They're going to do that thirty-one-five, but when we were all out there, it's not about the woman funding, you think you do it. I'm just trying to get that.
So, there's still possibility that the, the city can file with the middle market.
Well, yeah, because if we're being continued, then we pay at this time, and they do in the future.
Yeah, yeah, we're not going to, we got to be future. That's why, and what I have to call, we just have a runway that's not for them. And it's positive here. Someone goes, you know, really, 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 definitely.
It's possible, there's a hundred foot road, we have one half lane.
I always come out, we're, of course.
It happens a lot. I'm sure, you know. And I have, I think I have time to do it.
No, the county mayor, fire, the, the, we live it. Now, there's a city one, but they donated to the community for a five, and it's converted into a five, and then we're pulling down, and then built a new place, it's very, that's whole. Get me the bird.
Well, I can.
So, no answer required, how are we going to be aware of the situation, and you understand all the people in play here? And then, as we move forward, you'll see this again, hopefully in March, here and there.
So, we'll be depending on, you know, this is part of it, and, uh, we have money for it.
And this, now, we're trying to turn back to you as a district attorney. Uh, we're going to be aware, or we have to adjust to the fire department budget, you know why, that you'll find appropriations, um, in the other month. But we were hoping to be a lot like twenty-one-five. That's what we've been back at, and, um, Sanders has qualified it as a appropriate state.
Yeah, it's probably.
Last time I was in the road paving business was in Brooklyn, Ohio, just south of Cleveland, and a mobilized contractor pays a minimum of fifty thousand dollars, and that's in twenty eighteen, so.
All right, there's no more discussion on that thing, that's the, um. I'll just, I'll go to the chairman, one more discussion, and then we can go to the board.
All right. So, we've got quite a bit going on with the district here. Um, what I wanted to do is, um, update everybody associated, um, with the next adopt a highway opportunity is Saturday, March eleventh. And we meet at eight AM at the corner of Bobby Road and Fort Johnson Road. And appreciate everybody's help, the effort, keep James Island clean. The next Ways and Means Committee is scheduled for six PM. Here's the town's name, uh, our bond council, Lawrence Lynn, scheduled to provide training to enter into the commission. And that's why their schedule is again a little bit earlier than normal. Lawrence will be able to answer any question, and can also provide clarification on the district's upcoming capital lease and SRF loan debt condition, which is being based by for the fiscal year twenty-four rehab of the eight quarter warrants and manholes. And all of this, uh, incorporated in the district's fiscal year twenty-four budget, that we're also discussing that night. Uh, we will be able to present a more detailed version of the district's payment duty plan, associated duty plan, approved by the commission back in December of twenty twenty-six. So, I kind of gave you an understanding of A in twenty-four, we're going to be initiatives, we want to do, this is applying, we're going to kind of appropriate these funds. And then, kind of, based on the prioritization, uh, that the commissioner completed, we can be able to show you, use your ears, um, and start putting together who is going to do what by when as commissioner of the crowd, um, as last time, the time line, okay?
That is on March.
Twentieth is on Monday, the third Monday.
That was the twentieth, yeah?
Yeah. Correct.
Okay, March thirtieth?
March twentieth.
Okay.
We're going.
Six PM.
And that's where Lawrence is coming from?
Lawrence is coming.
But that's not a regular.
No, that's the Ways and Means.
Okay. The register will, will send you down.
Twenty-third.
Thanks.
All right. Hey, we didn't do that. All right, so, now, uh, yeah, I'll update you on the fiscal year twenty-three vehicles. Um, basically, everything that we thought for the larger vehicle was going to be pushed at fiscal year twenty-four. We got confirmation for a fire car, which is de-automated side loader, and instead of June twenty twenty-three, you're now talking November or December twenty twenty-three. And the same timeframe is now expected to be international dump truck. We were supposed to get that by June twenty twenty-three, and again, they're talking November or December twenty twenty-three. And, uh, Walter and I have been back and forth, Eve has been back and forth. Um, what we're trying to be able to set up, that in June, we're going to have the, um, solid place of the meeting, to be able to have, uh, Ryan Dimmick, who is the dealer, uh, to be able to do this, kind of, giving an update on the industry and what's going on. And, uh, and what he's seeing in the industry, why, what he's saying. If you go to your packet, and you go to the financial rollup, which is on. Right before the detail, you will see in here, right? You will see in there that, um, I'm going to, I'm going to talk a little bit about revenue. So, you will see the significant increase in general fund revenue. And that is now five million, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven, fifty-four cents. So, that same figure from last month is only one million, one forty-six, E O C sixty-nine. So, that's an increase of nearly four million dollars, or three million, nine hundred ninety-two thousand, from December of twenty-two to January twenty-three. If you dive into the general fund revenue detail, it's right on the first page of the detail. And in there, you see property tax, um, for district, uh, thirty-one, as well as the personal property tax for that tax district thirty-one. So, between last month and this month, the district has now collected over seven percent of the revenue for, uh, property tax, uh, in district thirty-one. And now, over ninety percent of the personal property tax revenue for tax, tax district thirty-one. And this is all a timing issue. So, both of these revenue figures are from Charleston County Distribution Tax Collection to the district through the month of January twenty twenty-three. So, members of the commission will understand, tax bill went out in October of twenty twenty-two. And then, um, we're due by the eighteen of January twenty twenty-three. So, this is what they collected in January, and distributed to us, and we got a good chunk. But members of the commission will understand, we are now seven months through, we're four and seven months through our fiscal year, and that is when we're really starting to see revenue. And so, that's kind of a timing issue, uh, when you see the revenue, okay, most of the fiscal year, we start seeing a lot. I'm hopeful that next month, when I show you February, and then after the March, we'll be mostly completed for our, uh, our revenue collection. So, that's good news, that's what I wanted to say.
Does that is, um, three dash one, you know, property taxes, that number's on?
Uh, that's DSC unincorporated.
Oh, it's unincorporated. Three dash one? Wow. Because we have much fewer than incorporated, but.
The figure of the next two digits, and then following is five, like, two, seven.
Now, which one is the counting bottom? Three one? Three one? Is it not only? What, most of our property taxes is coming in from the number of bones?
No, three one is incorporated and unincorporated. Five, six, the city, two, seven, and the follow.
Okay, so, three one is unincorporated and unincorporated. Okay, thanks.
That, you have mine.
What is the whole of these today? Three, the end one? The county has the three one, the end one. No, uh, the, uh, meeting, representative request, none, there's none.
Correct. Right, and so, that, uh, is, uh, at the last meeting, the nation requested that we include in page six letter, and then the determination letter. Obviously, uh, I'd be able to clarify your story with, uh, the legal team, so that we should, uh, provide the, uh, determination letter to, to submit and to fill out. So, that, that will send certified.
Um, are you just giving, uh, drafts of the fiscal budget, just in, in that whatever?
Yeah, and so, all of that, um, when we can, just sort of, under the lines, right? The provision will be discussed, that's the new, and then you have the, uh, moving calendar, and you have the, um, overview of, uh, spreadsheet that I went through the D K, part of the, um, revenue expenditures, and that. I also put in there the J D S P, uh, six, two, four, in the fiscal year, probably, in the beginning of the couple, March one, that's.
Are you putting a draft in, so that we can, or?
No, those, those are based on provisions. What you'll see at the twentieth is also conditions of part number one, general fund, one oh two, uh, waste water, you'll see debt service, and capital fund.
So, what are you having, fiscal budget is on the first, briefly?
April.
April?
I'm just, I want to all of the third, like, I'm a, I'm a voice.
They have already approved the plan, um, submitted by Will Connor, the retrofit fit. Eric Brinkhorn has set ten separate users. So, again, Eric Brinkhorn knows the fix, he's using the rest of the underlying, he's not contributing, um, associated with the homeowners association. And that is how they've been making the review. They're, uh, monthly, they, where, so, Will Connor knows that, and understands that, uh, they have our conversation, he committed those plans, and would be back. And so, what happened is the H O A, the title plumber, could be able to retrofit that underlying people structure, and E W S could stack those ten individual meters. And most of the ten individual meters are, uh, infected, uh, fully. E W S would then fill them as third quarter inch customers, ten third quarter inch customers. We then would fill them as ten third quarter inch customers.
Not like they, with the water. Well, my concern is with business on the, is there, is there, or? Of course, I'm, I'm, I'm the back one, and then the first one. Um, I, I just thought it might be, uh, fair to justify, you know, that they're going to pay. That maybe, not really.
It depends, well. Uh, okay, um, that's the discussion?
Yeah.
Uh, more, okay? This, okay, no, 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 no. Done? Okay. Um, that's the nine, so, okay, then we're going to see, again, welcome to discuss a purpose improvement and ordnance for the sale of property, T M S number four two five, dash, one two, dash, zero zero, dash, two nine eight, and T M S number four two five, dash, one two, dash, zero zero, dash, one two five. And unfortunately, that matter of the part of the lead. And, um, then you'll have, uh, two things.
Officer, officer, you're the one.
Yeah.
It's me, we're alive.
Yeah, we're all. So, um, the one, so is that the same?
I, I make another one, if you don't have one.
Okay.
Okay. Got you.
Well, all, seven? This is brown, bro.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. No. Session, you don't, you don't, I'm not ready. Okay, you're, you're ready. Um, no action with paper, no laws, laws, and then. There, there, yeah. Um, and then. Not good. Um, I am number fifteen, what you should do, that's, he has, number four two five, dash, one two, dash, zero zero, dash, two nine eight. And T M S number four two five, dash, one two, dash, zero zero, dash, one eight five.
I want to make a motion to approve, um, knowing that in March, we will have a public, oh, oh, sorry. I make a better.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Uh, vote for both, please? Mark, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, passes on, um, I am number sixteen, and ordinance, you would say. Okay, passes, and, um, I am number sixteen, ordinance with the sale of T M S number four two five, that's one two, that's zero zero, that's two nine eight. And T M S number four two five, that's one two, that's zero zero, one five, one eight five.
Right, so. I have, I have to read it for first reading, for the ordinance. So the ordinance number twenty twenty three dash O two, ordinance for the sale of approximately six point five two acres, located on Bill's Love Road, James Island, South Carolina. Whereas, the James Island Public Service District, the owner of approximately one point two seven acres, located on Bill's Love Road, James Island, South Carolina, Charleston County, T M S number four two five, that's one two, that's zero zero, that's two range. Five, over two acres located on Bill's Love Road, James Island, South Carolina, Charleston County, T M S number four two five, that's one two, that's zero zero, that's one eight five. Collectively, those parcels referred to as property here in, and whereas the district commission empowered with the ability to sell and dispose of any real property in one district, the district's payment tax, tax number one ninety eight, and asked in twenty twenty two, the general assembly, the state, South Carolina, regular session nineteen sixty one, as amended in South Carolina law. And whereas the district contracted for real estate services, the C D R E, for the offering of sales of property, the regular commissioning in March twenty second, twenty twenty one. And whereas the district filed, and filed with Part of nine, the procurement order, number twenty four two, that's zero zero, that's two ninety, that's nine zero one, in connection to the sale of property. And whereas the district, the district commission has received proposed purchase and sale agreements for sales of property with an amount of one million, eight hundred ninety nine thousand to K C property, L L C, green. And whereas the district commission intended to sell the property in accordance with the conditions of the agreement. And whereas, on course to rise between this and any proceeding ordered through the court of law, this ordinance shall prevail with respect to the twenty fifth section. Now, therefore, we inform the order and ordained by the James Island Public Services Commission. Meeting conveniences will be assembled this twenty seventh day of February twenty twenty three. The district authorized the sale of property in accordance with the conditions of the agreement and authorized the district manager to perform any obligations necessary if in some means such sale of property, uh, section one, section D, ordinance shall, um, respect the one second green date to be determined.
That's, I make a motion, with the correction that we have. I expect them in.
Okay, uh, any other just questions or points? Contact me, responsible group, uh, for one whole. Brown proud?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Sheriff, I think I'm a little bit kind of order before a journey, that I would prefer to be free trees to all dogs, to illustrate free trees that I'm worried about, that look, um, like they might have problems on Fort Johnson Road. I do not want these trees to be cut down, that is not why I just want to get these pictures. It was to show that we have some trees that can be freed in, either near Michael Drive on Fort Johnson. This is the one at like, this is the one at like, I've pointed, I feel more time to say, which I appreciate. But I just wanna make clear that I do not provide these photos of trees that I think need to be cut down, I would very much like to.
All time around the tree tree, and we'll report to that.
Thank you.
Of the county, and, uh, she has, thank you. I make a motion for adjournment. Second, yeah, well, call one? Brown proud?
Yes.
We gotta stop.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.